Morning to everyone. I am so excited about our teacher who is the ambassador for teachers across the state of Alabama. And we're doing it right here at Birmingham City Schools. But to just speak a second about Mr. White, whatever I ask him to do, he says, "No problem." I can say, "Mr. White, be over the math derby." "No problem." I can say, "Mr. White, can you do Saturday School?" "No problem." "Mr. White, can you help me with this initiative or after-school tutoring?" "No problem." So I know when it becomes his time to lead the nation as the National Teacher of the Year, he's going to have no problem. So we already claiming National Teacher of the Year for our very own State Teacher of the Year, Mr. Reggie White.
That's okay. It's my meeting, it's okay. We do want to recognize and acknowledge and thank you, Mr. White, for the work you do in our school system and the role that you're going to play representing all teachers and especially teachers in Birmingham City Schools. Do you still get a car? Do they give you a car? Yay! So see, he gets a car to ride around. I did have the opportunity to meet and work with a former Alabama State Teacher of the Year that represented Birmingham City Schools, Pwago Allison Grizzle. So you joined the ranks of those teachers and I'm like Dr. Ishman, I think we can go on and win the national. What do y'all think, huh? Thank you. And Mr. White, what just really, what I loved about hearing your story, you came into teaching in a very untraditional way. And so I want to thank you, it was just what you wanted to do for our children and how you've made that and worked that into the type of career that we know is very challenging right now. Teachers aren't, didn't have to have all the tools that they had to have a long time ago and what our children would face with today. So again, we thank you and acknowledge you and are really proud of the work you've done. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so there's a quote that says that a good education can change anyone, but a good teacher can change everything, right? And I feel like that you are the true embodiment of that. Teaching is such a beautiful thing because you have the opportunity to really change the perspectives, change the culture, change, you know, just the outlook of a person and plant the seed in them to do the same thing with everybody that they're exposed to. And I believe that that's what you're doing. I believe that that's what you're going to continue to do. And there are going to be people that could look back on the moments that they were in your class and be like, "Man, I just, I'm on the hill 'cause, you know, Brother Reggie White, man, he, you know, he helped me. He gave me, you know, all those different tips and advice and encouragement." So I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done and will continue to do.
Thank you very much. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my school board representative, Mr. Walt Wilson. Thank you very much. Glad to have you here, as well as all the other board members. So at this time, we want to thank you and again, we appreciate the work that you've done. Thank you so much.
So Madam President and Counsel, I have one more note, but Mr. White, I know you got some things you need to do. Madam Principal, thank you. But the school board members and definitely Dr. Sullivan, if you want to stay for this part, you can, because it's an acknowledgement of not necessarily the best news, Madam President. This school board, I mean, this superintendent, Dr. Mark Sullivan, as well of his, as well as his school board, along with countless high school principals, countless thousands of freshmen, seniors, sophomores, juniors in high school, have had to deal with too much debt. I don't know if I can leave this moment and at least not speak to the weight of what they've been dealing with since January 1 of this year. So we have not cleared five months into the new year. And within the last 24 hours, another student, 17-year-old, Dwayne Thomas, was killed. A lot of parts of this job is hard. But probably one of the hardest is when you have to make a call to a mother, loss, a son, or a daughter. But it's really, really hard when that child is just a child, right? When that child is not fully grown, when they're just in high school. She spoke to me last, she spoke to me about last week, just being at Carver High for awards week, awards day. She spoke to me about looking forward to the excitement of her son walking across the stage two weeks from now. He cleared all the requirements to finish high school, set to walk June 3rd. Spoke to his grandfather, who was in Arizona. And the amount of pain and anger in his voice, the amount of sadness in his mom's voice that his other five siblings, three brothers and two sisters, tough. Whatever we feel, it pales in comparison to what his mother is feeling right now. I don't even have the words. I'm looking for them, but I don't have them. But that's tough for a mother, it's tough for a grandfather, it's tough for his siblings, it's tough for school board member Ms. Watkins, who was in the area when it happened. That's tough for a school system that hasn't lost one, not two, not three, not four, not five, not six, not seven children. Would have been a beautiful moment to end on a high note of celebrating and loving on Mr. White, all the good things that's happened in Birmingham City Schools. You got to acknowledge, two weeks away now, classmates won't get to see their classmates march, mother will not get to see her child march. Not right. Just celebrated prom, clean decked out, celebrating life, next phase of his life, it's just not right. So that's heavy, forgive me for laying it on you, but I don't, I didn't think I could let this moment pass without acknowledging it and acknowledging all the things the system is trying to do to protect their children, superintendent and the board, and the teachers, and the principals, and everybody else, including even last week, going to two schools to talk about conflict resolution, including Carver High School. So that's a lot, but I had to share that, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President, to Dr. Sullivan, Jason Meadows, and all of the school board members. It is a night, a night or a day does not pass when I do not talk to my colleagues or the mayor about initiatives and things that I'm seeking out to combat gun violence. But I am deeply disturbed that adults would be out in a community, recording, and not stepping in. When is it going to come personal to us? Because it is a heavy burden and we cannot do this alone. Nobody can not come in here and continue to point the finger or the blame. On March 6, I stepped off a plane from Oakland, California, six hours on the ground and got a call that my 21-year-old nephew was shot down, 22 rounds into a car, like he wasn't And when I continue to see adults sitting around, recording, like it does not mean anything to anybody, people got to search their hearts. And then coward people walking around, shooting guns, popping them off. You don't even know how to clean a gun. And when you get a double feed, I want somebody to tell me what you do when they double feed, when the projectile don't eject. We got to get to the point where we have to come, and it has to become personal to us, innocent people getting shot down. I'm a mother, a auntie, a grandmother, a friend, a colleague. And we have to keep every week, every week, week after week after week, somebody coming in here, want to jump on the city council. But let me lay this on your hearts today, people. We got the antidote, and it's in Second Chronicles 7 and 14. He said, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin and will heal their land. Now my eyes shall be open and my ears attend unto the prayer that is made in this place." So this is a war cry, people. The Kingdom of Heaven said, "The Kingdom of Heaven suffer violence and the violence taken by force." We got to lock arms, we got to quit passing blame on what nobody is not doing, because we are doing everything that we could possibly do. And so we're going to continue to pour, excuse me, Mr. White, I am talking.
Counselor, Officer, if we have anyone else that has an outburst, I'd like to ask them to move, removed from the chambers. Go ahead, Ms. Tate.
And so, support a movement. We're going to support people that we know getting the work done. Resources going to be poured into people that got solutions, not people that want to be seen and don't have an answer. Because if we had the answer, we still wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be in this spot. Because if people was listening to what you were saying, we wouldn't be here. I'm not addressing you, but please excuse me. But Dr. Sullivan and the school board members, I, my sympathy goes out to the family and anything I can do to support you all, continue to knock on my door and the council doors. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll turn the meeting back over. That's it. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I know that was heavy. Sometimes you have to be honest and speak to the things that you're thinking about that are heavy. That concludes the mayor's report. At this time, I'm going to at least take one of your colleagues out here for a photo with the Teacher of the Year for the state of Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll return back to our agenda. Mr. Clerk, do we have any nominations of boards and agencies?
We didn't receive any.
Thank you. At this time, councilors will go ahead and we will review the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you review those items that are being offered for consent?
Okay, consent agenda starts on page two with items two, three, and four. Page three, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine are on consent. Page four, items 10 and 11 are on consent.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Page six, items 12 and 13 are on consent. Page seven, item 14 is on consent. Give me one second here, I've got to make sure. Page nine, item number 15 is on consent. One second to catch up, Madam President. All right, so we're at 15. Page 10, item 16 is on consent. Seven, items 17 and 18, items 17 and 18 are on consent. Page 12, items 19 and 20 are on consent, item number 21. Page 13, we have items 22. Page 14, we have items 25 and 26 on consent. Item 27 is on consent. Page 16, item 28 is on consent. 17, item 29 is on consent. Page 18, we have items 30 and 31 on consent. Page 19, item 32 is on consent. Page 22, item 33 is on consent. 23, we have items 30, items 34 and 35 on consent. Page 24, we have items 36, 37, 38, and 39 on consent. Page 25, we have items 40, 41, and 42 on consent. We have items 43, 44, 46, and 47. Page 27, we have items 48, 49, 50, 51, 52. On page 28, we have items 54, 55, 56, 57, and 58 on consent. Page 9, we have items 59, 60, 61, 62. 30, we have items 64, 65, 7 on consent. Page 31, we have items 8, 69, 70, and 71 on consent. 32, we have items 72, 74, and 75 on consent. Page 33, we have items 76, 77, and 78 and 79 on consent. And on page 34, we have item number 82 on consent. And I think that concludes the consent agenda.
Counselors, at this time, are there any items that you'd like to add or remove from the consent agenda? Counselor Quinn?
Yes, I'd like to remove item number 39.
Item 39 on page 24. Any others?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott?
I don't want to remove item 70, but I just wanted to know where the, where this dump truck will be used, landfill. I've never seen an articulating dump truck before. Maybe y'all could send us a picture, especially for a half-million-dollar truck. Thank you. That was all, I just, I was just curious.
All right, thank you. Counselors, I don't see anyone else listed. You have any other items you need to add or remove? All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors can entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda.
Remove approval.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Moore. Yes, I vote, my pad isn't working.
Counselor Quinn?
All right, thank you, counselors. The consent item passed. If you were here for any item that was listed as consent, your item has been approved and you can, you're free to leave. And now we'll continue with the rest of the agenda.
Item one is a resolution, no, I'm sorry. We need the presentation of the mayor's proposal.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'm back, Madam President and Counselor. For a presentation that I will go into a little bit of detail, as I, as I, at the beginning of my speaking moments, E.J. Turner, as well as Chaz Mitchell, are passing to you the actual proposed budget for the fiscal year 2023. Madam President and Counsel, I want to start by saying that the city of Birmingham has some positive news and is experiencing an unprecedented time of investment and growth. Business taxes are up in many, many categories and are enabling us to expand our investments and our shared priorities. Before I speak to any numbers and priorities, I want to start by saying thank you to each of you. We have been mayor and council, I want to say, since when, October slash November? And collectively, this is our first budget. I've had the opportunity to listen to you individually and collectively, whether it's by phone, via text, emails, one-on-ones, retreats, the issues you all are concerned about, the things you are passionate about, the priorities you have. I'm happy to say we have shared priorities. And I'm also happy to propose to you for the operating budget fiscal year 2023, a whopping $517-plus million budget. Appropriations to city departments will be $453-plus million for the 2023 proposed operating budget. That is up $75.6 million. I got several different notes here, so I'm going to take the time to read one based on what I just shared, shared with you. So that $453-plus into the $517-plus, 66% of this entire $517 million budget goes towards our personnel, which includes salaries, benefits, healthcare, pension, et cetera. A total, when you add the departments and personnel, 88%, 88% of this $517 million proposed budget goes to departments and personnel. So unpacking that a little bit, appropriations are up across the board for the departments and general government, they're up for public safety, and they're up for culture and recreation. When you, when you get a chance over these next few weeks to go through this proposed budget, you will see two areas that were, one was a division within one department and another was part of another department are now separated out. That includes capital projects, which we'll be recommending to this body to be an actual department. And then second will be the division of your services, which I will explain in a minute. I'll actually end on a very high note. To unpack that more, I want to talk about neighborhood revitalization first. I think you all, even before, some of you were counselors, have heard me over the last three years, talk about the mother or the grandmother on the porch. Spoke to, when she walks out on her front porch, she looks to her right, there's a dilapidated or burned-out structure to her left, overgrown or empty lot. In front of her, the sidewalk that's buckling, and she wants her child or grandchild to be able to play safely on the sidewalk. And she pulls out of her driveway and she wants to be able to go from point A to B without, I guess, swerving potholes. She wants her child to be able to play safely in the park or the rec center and streetlights to work. And when she gets home, she wants to be able to be in a position to be in proximity of purchasing healthy food, as well as she shouldn't have to duck or fall out of her bed and lay to the ground because of gunshots. What this budget does is continue to address all of the above I've just named. So now, when she steps out on her porch and looks to her right, we continue to focus on blight removal. So in this budget, there's $2 million for blight removal. To her left, there's $1.5 million in weed abatement. In front of her, hundreds of thousands in sidewalk repair, a continuation of that. And the continuation of what you all started less than 60 days ago of approving $10 million for street paving. We now have an additional $5 million for street paving. That neighborhood park I mentioned, want to expound on it towards the end of the presentation, but I want to talk about reimagining and repurposing rec centers with some resources. In this packet, you'll see new incentives and some old incentives, but there are at least three different, Chaz, if not four, incentives for healthy grocery options to remain in our city. And then I want to talk about our continued work that we started with the $3 million we gave to the health department, declaring gun violence a public health crisis to address violence interruption, et cetera. So that's place, and that place is in the form of public infrastructure. Those investments, when you tag on what you did 60 days ago, total of close to $20 million. Take off what you did, it's still over $12 million. So that's infrastructure. I want to speak to departments. Madam President, as I've shared with you in the past, I think I've shared all of this with you. You stripped down our jobs, the 10 of us, if we're not responsible for anything else, we're responsible for two things, public safety and public infrastructure with city tax dollars. So I just explained a little bit about the public infrastructure side. I want to speak to the public safety side next. Every department, again, budget has increased. Public Works has seen a significant increase, Fire has seen an increase as well. The biggest increase you will see is the Birmingham Police Department. As I continue to go through my notes, I need to pull some different notes up to explain There are a lot of concerns from various groups in the community about policing. Madam President, part of what I'm about to express to you is not necessarily numbers, but it's important in context to explain and it matches why these numbers exist. One is that there are concerns by some in the community for over-increased policing. There's a national conversation in that. So that's a, that's one group. Then you get down on the ground and you start listening to your constituents like I know you do, you have a total different group that is literally saying to each of you and to me, "We want more police." There is an actual third group, the actual police officers, who want, need, and deserve more resources. You're in the, when you are a mayor and a city council, you don't have the luxury to just listen to the loudest group. And the loudest group may be people who want more police. Some areas, the loudest group may be people who want you to, quote, "defund the police" or, "police to interact differently." Or definitely, if you are the mayor, your employees are very loud in saying, "This is what they want." As mayor, I have to listen to all three. This budget reflects listening to all three, including the increase in the police department's budget, where the total department has 1,091 employees, same as last year's budget, 1,091 employees. 720 of them are sworn officers, the same number from last year, 720 sworn officers. Investments and increases you see are several fold in detail in your book, which is between pages 101 and 103. In addition to that, for the people that are listening, if you don't have a book yet, this proposed budget is birminghamal.gov/what is it, budget2023? the, this proposed budget is birminghamal.gov/what is it, budget 2023? Say it out loud again? Thank you. Thank you, Rick. And this is a moment, actually looking into this audience. Diana, please stand up, as well as Kevin Moore, if you're in here, and the entire finance team, please stand. Madam President and Council, I totally failed to acknowledge the people that are actually responsible for this proposed budget. I'm not taking any credit. They did all the work and what you have, so let me publicly state thank y'all for all the hard work you did. But in those numbers, Madam President and Council, you see an additional 6.6, I believe, over $6 million for increase in salaries and wages. You see an increase in the pension for our police, the fire, the police and fire pension, which is almost $3 million, of $2.7 million. You see a new line item for uniforms, because our officers don't deserve to have holes in their uniforms, that's over $1 million. You see a whopping, close to 3, $2.7 million for 10 days for the World Games for our police, who will be max for overtime. And then you see a breakout of new accountability measures of all the detail for all the events of our city. So we talk about being a city that is open to tourism and sports and entertainment, and we, we keep getting all these new things, and all these other things exist, from runs to festivals and et cetera. That requires police presence, that requires a significant amount of overtime. So what we have done is tried to solve for protecting, investing, and pouring into our existing officers. That is through additional wages and salaries, that's through their pension, that's through their uniforms, and that is through overtime, and that is our job. I wanted to take the time, Madam President and Council, to publicly express that and explain that. But it's, it's important to acknowledge that when I talk to Chief Thurman, and we literally just had a conversation yesterday, we're, we're not ignoring the local or national cries about police reform, police accountability measures. And the numbers may not show it, but within this budget, what we're also doing is continuing to find, uh, policing alternatives for lower-level calls and crimes, um, for others to address, as well as continued training of our officers to be in a position to address, uh, mental health calls, because that's important. I think in addition to that, Madam President and Council, again, you just heard me up here express a 17-year-old was killed yesterday. We got serious gun violence in this city. We've had eight officers shot. Line of duty over the last four years, one, one fatal. Our officers gotta be equipped with the resources to go out here, fight and protect us, because we got some fools out here who don't give a damn and don't care. So you're gonna get some calls maybe about this police budget, but I'm gonna stand on it, because it's the right thing to do. So forgive me for going off on a tandem and going into more detail for that department versus other departments, but I think it was important to explain that in lieu of a local and national conversation around policing. Y'all know the conversation we have. Public safety, and as it relates to how we engage public safety, is never enforcement only. What I've just described to you is the enforcement side only. There's also the prevention and reentry side, which is the last note I would like to leave you. What are we doing for our youth? What are we doing to support education? What are we doing to support prevention and reentry measures? So I got it over here, and I'm happy to share it with you, and it's the most exciting thing about this budget. Before I do that, though, I did forget other things that are important in this budget, related to all of our employees, cost of living adjustment. I'm sorry, you already approved the cost of living adjustment. Let me, let me very, let me speak very clearly and clarify myself. Um, cost of living adjustment just went into effect in May, or the end of April, two, two pay, two pay-per-years ago, one pay-per-year ago. One pay-per-year ago, the new cost of living adjustment of 5% just kicked in. July 1, what will kick in is another 5% merit. What will kick in is longevity pay, $32 million for our pension, and I've already explained to you an additional $2.7 million for our police and fire pension, that's separate from the $32 million in this new budget for the overall pension for all employees. Um, in addition to that, Madam President and Council, transportation, we've, we've shared about for so long, Mr. Chairman, Dr. O'Quinn, we've only had one tool in toolbox as long as you and I have been living in the city of Birmingham, which is just the max buses. But over the last, um, two, three years, we've expanded our tools within that toolbox to include additional two tubes, one being the Bus Rapid Transit, which goes online this year. So we recommended a million dollars separate from the $10 million for BJCTA. We're also recommending an increase in VIA of 1.2 million dollars, which is different from BRT, as well as BJCTA. So that is a total, if my math is correct, of 12.2 million dollars for public transportation. Now let's get into our children. Now let's get into our youth, because if we don't do anything else, this is where we're going to have the real investments that we can have, the short and long-term return to make impact in our community. Earlier, I spoke to that mother, grandmother on the porch, told you about that child or grandchild. This is, I want to come back to that and speak to the child or grandchild. Few years back, we started with the Birmingham Promise, so we have a continuation of that at $2 million in this budget for the Birmingham Promise, related to apprenticeships, jobs, internships, et cetera, young people being in a position to make $15 an hour. But we continue with that. Million dollars again to the school system that allows a mental health professional in all 43 schools. We continue with that with a recommendation of $1 million for financial literacy, a robust curriculum for K through 12. We continue with, separate from what we've done with the violence interruption, separate from what we've done with the $3 million towards the Jefferson County Health Department, we want to tag on and add an additional $1 million in this budget for conflict resolution for our K through 12 children as well. And then our continued summer jobs program of 210,000 for the Department of Youth Services. And we've been having conversations with the county, as well as the Division of Youth Services, which is a separate division of Youth Services, where 14 through 17-year-olds are locked up for crimes that are attached to the, um, family court. There is a curriculum that has already been created, which includes while they are in custody, um, but it's also a portion for reentry. We want to support that. You see that is here as well. And I think I have mentioned early childhood development at $1 million as well for birth to five years old, to continue to make investments in the foundation, so when our children get to Birmingham City Schools, at a minimum, they are understanding the concept of words and numbers. And then the last thing, Safe Haven Program. I believe there are 18 rec centers. I think each of you have a rec center, a minimum one rec center in your district. Summer is approaching, two weeks our children will be out of school. We have to reimagine at least some of our rec centers to be safe havens for our children, if they don't feel safe at home and/or safe in the community. They don't have to choose the streets to hang out, they can come into one of our facilities, whether it's programs or resources or just for fun, y'all, that we provide that opportunity for our children. So we want to extend the hours, whether it's during the weekday, weekend, summer. There's an additional $1 million for parking rec, um, to reimagine Safe Havens for our children. All of that combined, I believe, for all those youth programs, Birmingham Promise, conflict resolution, early childhood development, financial literacy, juvenile reentry, mental health services, Sa, Safe Haven programs, and summer jobs programs is $7.4 million. Don't let nobody go out here and tell y'all this council's not doing what it can to support our youth and make the necessary investments and the priority with our tax dollars. Have only two more notes, Madam President, and they're very brief, and then I will yield. A lot of folk, um, budgets are a process, and we have to continue to educate our public about how tax dollars work. There are statutes in place that dictate the millet applied to avalory and property taxes, school districts, the debt reserve fund, libraries, et cetera. So I believe, Mr. Moore, you're over libraries, parking recs. Uh, my libraries are fully funded, they're fully staffed, and materials has an increase in their budget of at least a quarter million dollars, and now they're standing at 750,000. So you don't have any issues there. Everything else is left on the actual board, uh, to make those decisions of how they want to operate the system. But as it relates to this mayor and council, this library system is funded. Um, as it relates to the school system, those taxes collected, separate from the funds you see here, um, 72 million, Madam President and Council, will go towards our schools related to avalory and property taxes within our city limits. So this budget represents, as I started, unprecedented growth, and this is a really, really great opportunity. Oh, last note, boards and agencies are great, fully funded. All the boards and agencies you love, support, the ones that have advocated, the ones you've advocated on behalf of, the ones that have come to you and says, hey, make sure we're level-funded or fully-funded or a little bit more funding. One of those categories exists in all the boards and agencies as well. So we're excited about this proposed budget presented to you, Madam President and Council. I know you'll have to have your public process, I know that you'll want to go through this, there'll be many questions. Between Kevin Moore, Chaz Mitchell, I mean, it's Diana and her team, we look forward to going as deep as, as need be, as well as engaging the public. Rick, I need that website one more time, if he's not in. Anybody, I need that website one more time to make sure the public knows. I'm out here with this four slash stuff, I don't even know what four, four slash is, Madam President. Y'all got that? Public, I hope you have that as well. All of this information I've just presented is in detail to you and online for everybody to see. Madam President and Council, thanks for being patient with me as I presented that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The work begins. We appreciate you, uh, giving us this overview and providing us with the proposed budget for 2022, 2023. I will allow and ask our Pro Tim, who is the Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, to respond on behalf of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I am very excited for this budget season. I do want to say thank you again to Chief Moore. Um, he has always been there for us, answering our questions, and he has great experience. Uh, Chief Mitchell, thank you guys so much, and the finance team. I know it's not easy to dissect through a budget. Not only that, but last year's budget and the year before that was a very unusual budget because of the pandemic. Um, Mayor Woodfin, even though we haven't gone through the budget, I do want to thank you for restoring our budget back to being whole, because we had to make a very hard decision in 2020 and in 2021 to cut people, um, to sacrifice. I'm very excited to see what this budget will, will look like, um, post 2020. Um, thank you also for continuing to invest in the pension. That was a big mess, this administration, and really this council, well, maybe it could be, we'll just say six out of nine of us was given. Um, and thank you for listening to our concerns, because I see a lot of our concerns. I know Counselor Tate is big on reentry. I know Counselor Williams is big on making sure our public safety employees are taken care of. I know Counselor Moore is big on the libraries. Thank you for the libraries, really. Um, and Counselor, uh, Counselor Clark with the parking rec, uh, and parking rec, they have their own, um, something like Division Youth Services. They have a unique situation with funding. Uh, Counselor Abbott as well, um, I know there's things in there for like stormwater, she's very passionate about that. Counselor O'Quinn, I'm very excited about transportation, because this is gonna take it to another level, making sure that people who are in areas where maybe the transportation options aren't vast or great, that we're giving people different options to move around the city, making, um, Birmingham a more walkable city. And then Counselor Woods is so passionate with the youth, and Counselor Woods, I think there may be something in here you may like that, uh, Counselor, I mean, that Mayor Woodfin did for you, so. Um, I will say to the council for the new three ones, take your time to go through the budget. That was something I learned from Counselor Abbott, don't feel rushed. We will have an opportunity to submit our questions to Mayor Woodfin's office. Um, Madam President and I have been listening, we did hear that one budget here isn't enough, so we're gonna have another one, and Use Budget and Finance Committee is an opportunity for the public to talk to us. So thank you, Mayor Woodfin. Um, I look forward to next six or eight weeks going through this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tim. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. And I do want to also echo, I want to thank the mayor's administrative team. We know we have three members, this is your first time going over and looking at the budget. We want to thank you for the work you've done to bring them up to speed, give them the Cliff Notes and all the information they'll need to consider this budget. So again, um, the process begins, we're looking forward to the opportunity to hear from the public. This is your budget as well, and, um, the well of those who work for the city and do work with the city. So thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, at this time, will entertain item one.
Item one, a resolution setting a public hearing on the mayor's proposed budgets.
Move the item.
Second. All right, councilors, any questions regarding item? Counselor Pro Tim, if you'll just walk us through.
Uh, yes, so, um, for the new councilors, we have to have at least one public hearing to give the public an opportunity to give their input on things they like about the budget, things they don't like about the budget, and things that they want to add or maybe see moved around. Um, my proposal is, as I said before, to add one more public hearing, uh, Thursday, June 16th at 5:30 here in the council chambers, and we don't have to put this in the resolution, but for the June Budget and Finance Meeting, uh, we're gonna open it up at the end for a short period of time for people to also speak to just the council in general, um, about anything they would like to see. And then if you guys have any questions or discussions, we can talk about it then. Um, so that's really it. And I want to give us enough time for us to go through the budget, um, kind of dissect it, read it over and over again, and listen to our neighborhoods too. So, uh, go around to our neighborhood officers, tell them like, hey, this is the budget, go through it and come back and talk to us.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding the item before us, councilors? Thank you very much. Councilors, at this time, then we're ready for the vote.
Uh, sorry, do we need to amend the resolution to? No, okay.
Um, thank you for asking that question. I just got clarity. We don't have to amend the resolution, or do we?
I mean.
To add the date?
You want it in there? No, you don't? If you, I thought you mentioned you did it.
Right, because we'll announce them as public, we'll give a notice of the public hearings or the public meetings.
Has they?
As we announce them, correct?
Uh, normally, if you, but this one is by code, the one date, so if you wanted to add an extra one, I mean, is this up to the count?
Let's go ahead and add it.
Okay, I move to amend the resolution to add a second public hearing for Thursday, June 16th at 5:30.
If there's no objection, we can just do it without having a vote, so.
Okay.
Everybody fine with it?
Yes.
All right, so voting is over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
O'Quinn, you're down?
Yes, uh, yes.
All right, I got you. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. That motion passes, so, uh, please be aware that we will have two public hearings. There will be one on June 6, 2022, at 5:30, and the other one will be June 16, 2022, at 5:30. Thank you, councilors. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 39. Item 39. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a First Amendment to redevelopment project and funding agreement with Northside Redevelopment LLC, under which the redevelopment project and funding agreement for the Caraway Hospital redevelopment project will be amended to update the schedule for the demolition of buildings on the site and to provide that Northside redevelopment will retain title to property known as blocks E, F, and G in order to facilitate, uh, residential development on such property. in order to facilitate residential development on such property.
Second.
Counselor Williams?
Yes. Pro Tem and Counselor Williams. Thank you, Counselor O'Quinn. You asked this item to be pulled. Let you go ahead.
Yes, so this is a momentous occasion in the city of Birmingham's history. And I just couldn't let it pass without recognizing it. And, you know, it's a great day for the city of Birmingham that we're finally, after decades of decline of Caraway Hospital, we're finally moving forward to remove, not only remove the blight from the city of Birmingham, but move forward and transform that part of the city of Birmingham into something we will all be proud of. But I primarily wanted to pull this off of consent, because I want to recognize the contribution of the people who have been at the point of the spear of this effort. Becky Carpenter, Brian Wolfe, Robert Simon, and even Counselor Clark, on many occasions, have been embedded in the Druid Hills neighborhood for years. They have been boots on the ground in the neighborhood for years. I have seen it, witnessed it with my own eyes. Every neighborhood meeting, every cleanup, you name it, they have been in communion with that community for a long time. And, you know, I'm just extremely proud of the way that they have conducted themselves and led this project forward. So, you know, that deserves recognition. It's not something you see happen every day. So congratulations for many years of effort. This was an extremely complicated matter to resolve. There, I mean, I don't even know half the details, but part of the reason why we're just seeing this happen in 22 after, 2022, after years of, you know, seeing this move forward is because that it was just so complicated with, you know, 100 different parcels, 100 or more different parcels, with, you know, tax liens and different property owners and just, you know, having to go through all of the legal hoops to, you know, assemble the property and clear title. I just can't, you know, imagine. But so it's been extremely difficult, but Corporate Realty and their team have done an extremely fantastic job in, you know, reaching this point, so I just wanted to recognize them. And not only them, but, you know, there's been a huge amount of effort that's come from within City Hall itself. And there's a lot of city staff that have been right there alongside and helping to move this forward, you know, as well as folks in the neighborhood itself, you know, helping to be engaged and shepherd this and provide input on how the project should move forward. So congratulations to you all. This is a great day for Birmingham.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. I'm certain that everyone on the dais, we echo the sentiment, the work that has been done by each entity to make this possible and to make this happen. I reflect back on when I first was appointed to serve on the council. A young man said, come take a ride with me. And so he pulled up in this sleek, black vehicle, and we took a ride to the place where he was born. And we got to see just what was once a great and grand hospital and a great and grand medical complex. And to see the way that it decayed and become a part of that community. I want to thank not only the entities that are making this happen, but the neighbors and the neighborhoods that have worked, that they have listened to you, and they want to make this place a great place, again, to live, work, and play for the city of Birmingham. So I just want to echo Dr. O'Quinn and thank you. Counselor Smithman?
For Corporate Realty, thank you for being a good corporate citizen, right? Because when this issue came up, instead of asking for more money from us, you found out how can we help the city save money? And that's very rare that we hear that from them. So thank you so much. And Mayor Woodfin, you have kept this promise. You said that you were going to make sure you revitalize your home, your home neighborhood. And I think it's really, really says a lot about you that you kept your word and that you're really helping to revitalize that area, a very blighted area. I think you're going to bring a lot of hope and promise to people over there, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Woodfin, thank you very much. To Corporate Realty, Becky and Kara and Robert Simon, I have some deep roots with Caraway Hospital, like the mayor. I lived on 25th Street North, and I attended MacArthur Elementary. And so I can appreciate the times that we would run up that hill to the 10th floor to the dietary and get the good ice cream at Caraway. And not only that, the Char House Restaurant was on the corner, the Good Char Burger. So it is amazing to see, you know, this development. Got some deep, deep roots in Druid Hill, Fountain Heights, just that whole, you know, parameter of Norwood. So thank you all again, and the partnership. And people are excited, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote. Thank you very much. That item passes. Again, we thank everyone to see this item come before us, and the work will begin. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk. I move approval.
Second.
All right, councilors, this item is before us. This is a resolution setting a public hearing of June 21st, 2022. Any questions regarding this item? Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote. All right, councilors, thank you. That item passes. We've set that hearing for June 21st, 2022. Next item, Mr. Clerk. I move approval.
Second.
All right, councilors, this is a resolution setting a public hearing for June 7, 2022. Any questions regarding this item? Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote. All right, thank you, councilors. We've set that public hearing. The next item on our agenda, councilors, I'll entertain any comments you have or updates you have regarding your district. I'll start. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask councilors if you have any updates, starting with you, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, we have some neighborhood meetings this week. Graymont Neighborhood, which is new to District 8, is back to in-person meetings, and will gather on this Wednesday, the 18th, at 4:30 at the Smithfield Library. Please be mindful of distancing and masking, as we're not out of the woods yet with this pandemic. On Thursday at 6:00 PM, the Ensley Neighborhood will have their meeting via conference call. You may call my office at 205-254-2304 to get the conference dial-in information for the meeting. Be sure to join us this Saturday on May 21st for our Cleanup at the Junction. Our Be Litter Free Campaign's next stop is Tuxedo Junction. We'll meet up at the Erskine Hawkins Park to clean, you know, to help clean the tuxedo neighborhood. And we'll meet up at 9:30 to begin registration and head out to clean at 10:00 AM. And please join us and our other partners as we help to maintain the beauty of this historic neighborhood. Be sure to join the Five Points West Community for a Community Fun Day. And this is going to happen at the Crossplex on June 11th. And this free event will include music, games, fun, vendors, and the music will be both live and DJ. It's a great, it's from 10 to 4, and it's a great opportunity for residents of Bellevue Heights, Bush Hills, Central Park, Ensley Highlands, Fairview, and Green Acres to meet their neighbors and learn about your neighborhood associations and other local initiatives. It'll be fun. It'll be family-friendly fun for all ages, so please attend. Again, June 11th from 10 to 4. And this past Saturday, we held our second quarterly District 8 Leadership Summit. This time, we were at the Five Points West Library, and we had good representation from almost all of our neighborhoods, including the new neighborhoods. So we discussed the very relatable topic of vacant property strategies. And we were joined by local and national experts, including, among them, including Caroline Douglas from the Birmingham Land Bank Authority, and Kim Graziani, who is a consultant for the Center for Community Progress, which is a national think tank on vacant properties. And she's also a new resident to Birmingham. So we're really lucky to have Kim living in the city now, because she works in communities on this topic all over the country. So we had a very informative and productive session that covered, you know, both a look at our local issues and a national view of causes and cures for vacant properties. So stay tuned as we look forward to following up on some of the things that came out of this meeting. The Birmingham Department of Public Works, who was honored earlier here today, is hosting a Greenhouse Open House. And this happens in District 8 at the Horticulture Greenhouse, which is behind the Crossplex on Wednesday, June, I'm sorry, Wednesday, May 18th, from 9 to 2. The greenhouse is located, I already said that, directly behind the Crossplex on the, in the Five Points West community. So come and check out what we have growing on in District 8. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Really quickly, did want to thank everyone who came out to last week's Be Litter Free Cleanup. Coming up this week, tonight, 6:30 PM, the Sun Valley Neighborhood Association will be meeting via Zoom. Also, next Sunday, May 21st, the East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center Walk with the Doc will have the monthly walk. Has been a really good opportunity for people to get out, have good conversations about healthy lifestyles, and get exercising. So definitely look forward to seeing everybody out at East Pennsyl Valley Recreation Center Track. And then this Saturday, also at East Pennsyl Valley Track, we'll be holding our community garden, the Planning. And so we'll be actually planning, we have 16 garden beds out there. Had a really good growing season last year. We'll be planning. And you can also come to District 1 and see what's growing on.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore?
Yes, so so the Alabama Bankruptcy Assistance Project, they're supposed to be having a bankruptcy education event this upcoming Sunday at 3:00 PM. It's Social Venture. The address is 5529 First Avenue South. The Alabama Bankruptcy Assistance Project will offer a brief presentation about bankruptcy, followed by an opportunity to speak one-on-one with a volunteer attorney about debt relief options. So definitely check that out if you have an opportunity. There also will be a food market taking place in Collegeville this Saturday, May 21st, from 9 to 10:00 AM. 310433 Terrace North at the Christian Valley Baptist Church. For any questions or concerns, you can reach out to nina@gasgroup.org or 205-301-9673. And then in addition to that, we have some video announcements that will be played at the end of the council meeting.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The, well, first of all, the World Games are coming. 51 days we have left to get ready. I see a lot of scrambling around going on out there, and the parks are looking better. So, and I hope that everybody's paying attention to the street closures, because you don't want to be rushing to work late and find out that your normal route is closed off and you have to find a new way to get where you're going. And that is on the city website, as well as published in the Birmingham News and half of everywhere else. The next planning and zoning meeting is on June 25th at 3:30 PM. Of course, we had to cancel our last meeting due to the water problems in City Hall. So we will have, I guess, a longer meeting on the 25th at 3:30. Tonight, the Five Point South Neighborhood meets at Highlands United Methodist Church at 6:00 PM. The Friends of, oh, and Thursday, we will be having a meeting regarding the flooding that emanates from Caldwell Park. So hopefully, we'll have more news after that meeting about a resolution to the flooding problem that occurs at the Virginia Sanford Theater and Episcopal Place. So the Friends of Avondale Park are having a meeting tonight at 6:40, from 6:45 to 7:45 at the Avondale Library. It's their first in-person meeting in two years, so everyone will be able to look at each other. The Avondale Park Group will also have a cleanup on Saturday, starting at 8:00 AM. It'll just be from 8 to 10 due to the heat that is expected on Saturday. So that is all for me. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. East Thomas Neighborhood is meeting tonight at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Evergreen Neighborhood will be meeting tonight also at 6:00 PM in person at the Evergreen Community Center, located at 1867 26th Street North. Smithfield Neighborhood will be meeting tonight as well via phone call, call-in at 605-472-5447. The access code is 558467. The North Prep also will be meeting tonight at 6:30. And that's conference call as well, 605-313-6354100. The access code is 1226945. And Ensley Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Ensley Rec, located at 2800 Avenue K. Ensley. Or you can dial in at 564-888-5518, and the access code is 818017. And the next public safety meeting will be Tuesday, May 24th at 1:00 PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCrano later than Thursday, May 19th at 1:00 PM. And District 9 continues the Be Litter Free Campaign. The next cleanups for District 9 will be this Saturday from 10 to 12, with the first one being the Sandusky Community Cleanup. And they're going to meet at the Jimmy Hudson Recational Center, located at 237 Pratt Highway. East Thomas Community Cleanup. 237 Prep Highway. East Thomas Community Cleanup, same time. They're going to meet up at Wilkerson at 9:30, and that's located at 116th 11 Court West, Birmingham 35204. And finally, Smithfield State is going to meet as well from 9:00 to 11:00. The meetup time is 8:00 at Games Chapel A and E Church, located at 1600 Daniel Payne Drive Way. So the Be Litter Free Campaign continues for District Nine.
Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Brown Springs Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday, May 19th at 6:00 PM. Also wanted to say congratulations to everybody that's involved with Southern Research on their new biotech research facility that they are going to have on the Southern Research Campus. It's exciting to see what UAB's been able to do, what Southern Research has been able to do, and to see Birmingham becoming more of a medical research destination or hub in the Southeast. Those kind of jobs spur off a lot of other secondary and tertiary jobs, and I think that it's very important that we continue to work with, as the city collectively, that we continue to work with the county and state in incentivizing projects like that, that are considered big build projects and projects that will have an impact probably for generations when all of us are long gone. So anyway, congratulations to Southern Research and to the state and the county and the city for working together to get that done.
Thank you, Councilor Williams. And I do want to thank those councilors who were present yesterday for the groundbreaking, able to represent the city council. It is a great opportunity for us here in the city of Birmingham to be part of the research and medical improvements that'll be going on over there between UAB and Southern Research. Councilor Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Central City Neighborhood Association will meet to tonight at 6:00 PM at the Central Library. I'm told that there are drinks to follow at the Margaret, and first one's on the house, so Central City folks, pay attention.
All right.
Friday, this is National Bike to Work Week, and Friday, May 20th, is National Bike to Work Day. So get your bike tuned up. You might want to head down to 20th Street Friday evening. There's a, the 20th Street reopening is, they're going to have a celebration of that on Friday afternoon from 4:00 to 8:00. The mayor and I are going to be down there around 6:00 PM, but Rev. has got a little celebration of the reopening planned for Friday night, so you can ride your bike down there. You know, the street's been reconfigured and to be more pedestrian and bike-friendly. So very excited to see that happening. Saturday morning, at, from 9:00 to 12:00, there will be a workday at Crestwood Park, organized by the Crestwood North Neighborhood. And they're asking folks to, you know, bring out a few hand tools. They were not able to purchase mulch through the Park and Rec Board just because of timing. So they're also asking for contributions of mulch, pine straw or pine bark mulch for that effort. But you can contact Frank McCoury, who's the Crestwood North Neighborhood Association President, for more details on that. Transportation Committee will meet on Monday at 2:00 PM here in the council chambers. And Druid Hills also will meet at 6:30 PM Monday night at Protective Life Stadium. And finally, we have two board openings. The first is for the Birmingham Parking Authority. The only qualification that is necessary for that is that you be a city of Birmingham resident. So if you're interested in serving on the Parking Authority Board, please contact my office. Also, we have an opening on the Birmingham-Jefferson County Port Authority Board, and the qualification for that is that you be a resident of Jefferson County. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Now let me just be sure about Friday. So if I load my bike up into my car and I ride down there for the event, does that count?
It'll count. In my book, that counts.
So we'll be sure to bring, load our bikes.
You don't even have to load your bike up. You can just get one of those VO or Gotcha bikes, you know, so.
Come on down? All right. Thank you. Councilor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to everyone that showed up for the light busters cleanup this past Saturday and to our first pop-up farmer's market. This will happen every second Saturday of the month through October. Councilor Quinn, I will see you this Friday at Party with 20th as well. The Five Point South Neighborhood meeting will be held tonight at 6:00 PM in the Social Hall of Highland United Methodist Church. The Next Budget and Finance Meet will meet this Monday, May 23rd, at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next budget and finance agenda. Email submissions to Laquita Wilson and AJ Graham. The Shawlon Memorial Gardens does its maintenance for the grounds every Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00. Come out and help maintain the grounds. Coffee with the Cop with South Precinct will be held this Thursday, May 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00. I would like to remind everyone to check their voting sites. On the Secretary of State website, we have an election coming up on the 24th. In particular, the Tidusville Neighborhood, we will be voting at the old Center Street School instead of Sixth Avenue Baptist Church. Live Health Smart Alabama and Westminster Church are currently hosting a mobile health van and booster clinic at the church. It started at 9:30 and it will end at 1:30, and they will be giving away gas cards. The first 25 people, along with hygiene kits, diapers, and gift bags. Cooking classes will be held on this Sunday, May 22nd, beginning at 3:30 PM at Railroad Park. The first 100 families will get free ingredients for whatever is being cooked in the class. And also, Railroad Park is still having their exercise classes through the week, starting at 6:00 PM. They start in March and they will end October 31st. So Mondays are boot camp days. Tuesdays are hip-hop cardio classes. Wednesdays are zumba classes. Thursdays are yoga classes. Fridays are family fun Fridays. And then for our seniors, they have a class at 8:00 AM. So I've been seeing Councilor Woods working out. So Councilor Woods, you gonna meet me on the Monday for a boot camp?
Good work.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Announcements for District Seven. We do have some neighborhood meetings today. We have the Garden Highlands Neighborhood will meet at Mount Hilliard Baptist Church at 6:00 PM. The Green Acres Neighborhood will meet at Lifting Christ Worship Center at 6:30 PM. Tomorrow, the West Goldwire Neighborhood will meet virtually via conference call, and that will be at 6:00 PM. The dial-in information is 602-580-9816. The pass code is 667-79362. Then on Thursday, the Industrial Center Neighborhood will meet in person, and that will be at 2833 29th Street Southwest. They're meeting at 1:00. The Hillman Neighborhood will meet at the Mary Doocy Center at 1:00 PM. And the Germania Park Neighborhood will meet via conference call. That dial-in information is 701-802-5384. The pass code is 304-2330, and that's at 6:00 PM. We do want to congratulate our Birmingham Stallions. They are still the only unbeaten team in the USFL, so they're 5-0, so congratulations to them. The Stallions will play their next game. They'll play the Michigan Panthers on this Saturday, May 21st, at 6:30 PM at Protective. The Committee of the Whole will meet tomorrow at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. The Utilities Committee is not meeting this month, but on behalf of the committee, I do just want to remind our residents that there is a new federal program called Affordable Connectivity Program, or ACP. Eligible households can receive up to $30 per month. They'll receive a voucher that can be applied to their internet bill. So if you get federal benefits, you are probably also eligible for this benefit as well. If you want more information or to find out about your eligibility, please go to www.acpbenefit.org. And as we've already said, the World Games are coming. We've got 51 days. Like you, Mrs. Abbott, I keep seeing, I think we all seeing a lot going on, clearing a lot of shrubs and doing a lot of things with streets and making the city look, hopefully, it's very presentable and warm and greeting to our visitors when they join us in a few days. At this time, this concludes our counselor updates. We will now open our council meeting for speakers. Mr. Clerk, before you call the speakers, I would like to remind the public, and we did have information that was shared to us during our attorney's hour during the League of Municipalities meeting. And this meeting is a business meeting. This meeting is held to conduct the business of the city of Birmingham. This is an opportunity for us as councilors to do what you've elected us to do, and that is to enact ordinances and to provide legislation, and also to authorize the mayor to spend the monies that we have budgeted to be spent. We operate under an ordinance that says under Code 1980, Section 2-12-12B, "Any person and a member of the city council making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous while the city council is in session, shall be forthwith by the presiding officer, barred from further ordinance before the city council unless permission is continued, is granted by majority voice of the city council." So I'd just like to ask you, when you come before the council, it is an opportunity for us to hear from you. I please caution you to follow decorum. We don't shout back. We don't argue back and forth. We would like for you to do the same for us. Are you going to invite anyone into your home who has threatening language, threatening voice, or wants to become belligerent? We are not going to do it to you, and I ask you to please use a matter of decorum when you come before us. So at this time, we'll entertain speakers, and remember you have three minutes. And if you will, please give us your name and address when you're called. Mr. Clerk?
I don't know if they're still here. Rabbi Rose?
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. This is an attention to the mayor, who I think I see in the corner over there, and all the council members. I am Rabbi Zion's Rose out of North and South Carolina. I'm the head of Zion's Rose Ministries, which is a nonprofit ministry out of the Carolinas. And the Messiah has chosen, and the Messiah, Yeshua Jesus, has chosen Birmingham, Alabama to be the fifth citywide processional since the year 2003. We are seeking the blessing of the mayor and all of the city council members, and we are requesting to be on the mayor's calendar himself to speak face-to-face as soon as possible. Last year, this processional marched in the middle of downtown New York City. We had police escorts, and we concluded and spoke at Ground Zero. A year before, we were invited to Washington, DC. We were escorted down Constitution Boulevard, where all the military processionals are held, bypassing the White House lawn, ending in front of the Capitol Building with the testimony. This one-time event to the greater metropolitan area of Birmingham is seeking the good of this city. We are keenly aware of the crime and the violence and the racial divide that has long time existed in Birmingham and all the surrounding areas. We believe that this processional of biblical truth, from Genesis to Revelation, the promotion of peace will be the result, and patriotic loyalty will have a positive influence in your city after our departure. This processional will precede the World Games by exactly one month. Nine months of intense prayer has gone into bringing this event into your city. In all four of our citywide former processionals, we have been provided with police escorts at no charge because we are seeking the greater good and the transformation of the city of Birmingham. Myself and my ministry team incur all expenses for lodging, for hotels, Airbnb, and transportation, a massive truck into your city. We are requesting 1,000 sandwiches. We do not eat pork, shrimp, or crab. Chips, fruit, and individual water bottles, not just for the participants, but for the citizens of the greater metropolitan area. We will be meeting Friday night and all day Saturday, which will encompass our request for these bag lunches for this two-day event. The designated application at City Hall and the Alabama Police Department was submitted in January of this year as we came to pre-plan this event. We have been designated a three-mile route, starting at the corner of Cooper Hill Drive and Montclair Road, ending with a great celebration at Ramsey Park. The co-directors, besides myself, of Zion's Rose have submitted the city and the noise permits for the event. However, a major glitch to our moving ahead has occurred with the fees for police escorts and security in the amount of $4,300, which we are not prepared to meet because we do not have any sponsors and no one is, has financial gain whatsoever that is associated with this work. We believe minimal police and security representation is all that would be necessary from 3:00 to 5:00 on the day of the event, which is June 4th. We have formerly only paid for a city permit in our former four citywide processionals. We are fully aware of the seven-day advance requirement necessary to acquire our permits. Therefore, we are seeking a conciliatory conclusion in this matter, and we thank you for your prompt response. I'm signing off. As Rabbi Zion's Rose out of North and South Carolina, and Rick Ramey, he's not with me today. He was with me at the beginning of the year when we pre-planned this event. But we have chosen, by the Spirit of the Living God, to come to this city. We've been to four major cities. As we stated, we had the police escorts in New York and Washington, who invited us, and we want to see the city expunged of anything and everything that is defiling, all crime, all offense, anything that would defile your city. We want it to be cleansed for the police department and for everyone here. We want to see children be able to play in the streets. We are bringing the love of God to your city through this work, and we're excited to be coming here.
Thank you, Rabbi Rose. We appreciate you.
Do you have any questions?
No, ma'am, not at this time. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Midday, Paul. Frank James Matthews III, from Birmingham, Alabama. As always practiced by Frank Matthews and others, when there are global climatic type of situations in the nation, as it relates to racism, violence, starting with the first massacre in Columbine, where I lived there, Colorado, always would step up from a global perspective. In Birmingham, they allowed me in that year, 1999, to represent Birmingham. I actually became a stringer for all the news media for Alabama because I had a relationship with the father of Isaiah, who was the first black kid killed in a mass shooting in America. So I'm here today to put you on notice. So I'm here today to put you on notice. One, at 2:30, I would like for you to join committee, the Juneteenth Committee, as well as Outcast Voters League, as we will lay a wreath in Lynn Park at 2:30. Because Birmingham's voice has to always be heard from a global perspective when we have these kind of cataclysmic situations to happen in this nation. And let me just put you on top of some stuff. That Birmingham time is coming. Because I've moved on, 66 years old now, and each time things have happened in this type of climatic lives being taken, I've always used the code that I've had with gangsters and everybody else within the regions of Southeast, that we will spare Birmingham. Yet, the George Floyd situation, we know what happened with that. So let me just give you a little bit of history. When they say, why 200 miles? Why did this massacre? Why did this homegrown terrorist travel some 200 miles to go to Buffalo? One, Buffalo produced our first black quarterback, Mr. James Harris, in Buffalo. Also, he was the first black quarterback to play in the Pro Bowl. Not only that, but O.J. Simpson gained more yards than any running back in the history of NFL football. And then you know that also, that the first game that this black quarterback played was against Joe Namath, which played for Alabama. And you know that Joe Namath, his most famous movie was he played Johnny Rebel. So again, as I do what I do to try to understand the timing and try to get ahead of the curve in a lot of situations, because as we get closer to the George Floyd, again, assassination, we can expect some other things to happen. Now again, Buffalo was chosen, the Kingsley community, a black community, because, you know, we like to say we are black kings now. Also, Top Grocery Store was located on Jefferson Street, okay? In symbolism for Jeff Davis, the president of the Rebels, when they fought war against the United States of America, the Confederates. So there's a lot of history why destinations are sought and to be had and to bring about certain type of changes. Even O.J. Simpson's number was 32 as a football player, and the youngest person he shot was 32. So God deals with us in numbers, places, and spaces, and times. So Birmingham has a target on its back. So I want to say that. That's why. When Dillan Roof killed the nine, I was out there at that monument, walking seven times around it, because I knew there was some disgrace that needs to be rejected from this city. Because sooner or later, if we didn't act right with it, it would bring us what was delivered to us during the George Floyd mayor event. Okay? So again, now you understand why this boy traveled some 200 miles. He didn't like the name of a black man who was the first quarterback to change what America likes more than anything ever, its NFL football game. Also, O.J. Simpson and James and Mr. Brown, from my beloved Cleveland Brown, was the first two black men that actually placated in having sex on television with a white woman. Okay? So when you put all those variables in, those people that's electing and selecting certain spots to do something, because there's some evil folks in this world. There's some evil black folks in this world, and some evil white folks in this world. And it's not about what they're saying about, we want to erase white folks. Let me tell you something. It's 310 million white people. Now Hispanics are really moving, because Hispanics have moved by us. We used to be the large majority, it's black people, but now we're third. There are 61,419 Hispanics, and only around roughly 49.1 million black people. We were in 1999, we were about 37 million, and Hispanics were less than 22 million. They doubled us. But we're doing things to ourself. We're doing things to our eating habits. There are multiplicity of things that keep us from growing exponentially as black people in this country.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. You're a little bit over your time, so can you close it?
I yield because the lady really went on. I'm closing.
I know.
I'm very much closing. Again, I just wanted you to be informed. I spend weary nights, weary nights checking all these crazy groups. While you're sleeping, I'm like a prophet, constantly, interneting, interneting, trying to be ahead of some curves. Okay? I love each and every one of you. I pray for your families. I pray for your great-grandchildren, like I got, because I'm gray-haired now. I got plenty of girls. I got two of them born on Christmas, and I'm two born on Sunday, one born on Christmas. They wear my billfold out, so I ain't got time to come down here and embarrass you. Because I'd be embarrassed if I can't take care of my grandkids and my great-grandkids.
Thank you.
That's why they don't hear much from me anymore, but I'm mad as hell. And let me shut down by saying this, uh, thank you for the extension. I really appreciate the public works. I appreciate them more because the burden they have to have picking up all their yellow tapes. We got miles of yellow and black tapes throughout this city of our young people and us dying. And those public works, hours of tape. It's time to cut the tape. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Wilson Hill. Cedric Hatch. Cedric Hatch.
Good morning, Mr. Hatch.
What's the mayor's office? Bruce Said in the absence of Brother Randy. Good morning. Hey, I apologize early on. It just kind of, my compassion in my heart caused me sometime to go there, because meekness don't mean weakness. Because oftentimes, when people say, why are you kind of loud? Because a gunshot is loud. Other crimes is loud. So state, I think that was you, earlier, came out the Bible. Does another scripture in Isaiah 58, I'm in verse 1, says, shout loud, it's about none. Let me break that down for you. Uh, let's go over there in verse 18, verse 16. So state, you'll look at it for me. Verse 18, verse 16. Ain't gonna be long, y'all. Verse 18, I'm gonna show you how Bruce Said ended up coming to the city council meeting over about 20 some years ago, just about. Verse 18, verse 16. Hold a second. He's real loud.
A man's gift opened doors for him and brings him before a great man.
A man's gift opened doors for him and bring him before great men. Now let me translate that for y'all. When that door opened up before great men and politicians and all that kind of stuff and people of importance, don't go sell your soul, Bruce Said. That ain't what that scripture mean. Don't get over there on that side now and sell your soul and quiet down. Because let me tell y'all something about people like me. When you go to CNN, it's get quiet, there's a reason we ain't got quiet. Or we sold our souls. Yeah, that's why we loud no more. First, we were vocal for the people. But that's not my assignment, y'all. And I'm gonna get on to my assignment, because I know I'm on time. My assignment this morning is, our Father, we come right now before you would bow heads and on our hearts. Father, we seeking a name above every name, and that the name of Jesus, every knee shall bow, and every tongue shall confess. Father, no other help we know, Father God. You said we have not, because we asked not. Luke 18, verse 1, said, men, I'll always pray and not fail. First, that's only 5, verse 17, said, we to pray without ceasing. James turns around in 5, and verse 16, said, we to pray ye one for another, not to pray on each other, but pray ye one for another. Father, we asking for this stronghold, this curse, or whatever been placed on this city for it to be removed. You said we would turn from our wicked ways, Father. We would hear from heaven, Father. You forgive our sins. Father God, you forgive our sins, Father God. Father, we talking we, and we include me, Father. We is not they. We is not I. We is all, because all have sinned, not y'all, but all have sinned, and come short of the glory of God, Father God. And so, Father, we repent, Father God. We ask you to give us a clean heart, renew it as a right spirit. Father, sometimes we can have a good heart, but a hard head, Father God. And Lord, when we misuse the Pope, we got a hard heart and a hard head. Lord, don't let us continue to think of a World Games more important than a body with blood on the ground. Don't let us continue to think of a stagnant football team is more important than a 15, 16-year-old child that was killed, Father God. Don't let us cut somewhere's tape in front of these buildings downtown that we forget about what's going on around the corner, Father God, across town, Father God. Father, bring us back, Father God, to that love and that compassion, Father, that you had, that you told us to have. Because you said in First John 4, verse 20, we can't love a God that we never seen in our life and don't love each other, whom we look at every day. Father, we know some of this stuff we dealing with ain't all about the sin, the skin, but it's all about the sin, Father God. We got evil on both sides, as a young man Frank just said, Father God. But Father, we seeking, Lord. Father, you didn't bring me down here to impress nobody, or to just to impress and getting on and getting next to the male, getting next to these folk. You brought me down here 20 years ago to be about my father's business. And 20 years later, I want to continue to be about my father's business, Father God. Father, ain't not a perfect father, but I'm perfect for the calling. I'm perfect for the calling, Father, because you said many have been chosen, but very few were called, Father. Very few were chosen, Father God. Many have been called, get out of my prayer, devil. I'm about to close. Many have been called, but very few have been chosen, Father God. Or few is two or more. Send us labels in the vineyard, Father God. Father, we got too many celebrities and not enough servants, Father. Send us more servants that care about people, Father. All we need is a compassionate heart. We ain't got to be a mayor, or commissioner, or city councilor, or police, or school teacher. We can be the average Joe on the corner. Just have a compassionate heart for our people, Father, because we need help, Lord. We crying out. You said we can look up to the hills from which our help coming, nor our help coming from the Lord. And Father, in closing, Father, we be man for to give you all our some, but all of the glory, all of the honor, and all of the praise. And we agree by saying amen. Hey, I want to say one thing about that letter you read, Sister Wadron, oh, there ain't three minutes ago, about how you act when you coming here. Let me tell you something about that letter. I would need some male in a council to get the fighting in here. Go behind them doors and fight each other. And so every time I see one of y'all telling folks how to behave, I say, need to take them letters and tear them up. Because some of these folk get frustrated. I know that's an order for everything. There's a time, Ephesians, Chapter 3, said, there's a time and a season for everything. But don't pull that on the citizens if you don't obey it yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch.
Because I was trying to break up the fight when they got the fight that day. I was trying to tell them, y'all shouldn't be acting like that. Y'all embarrassing us as a people. And they was a man in a council. So we can't turn around and get mad at the citizens and get smart, and when they say something bad, officer, come get him. At some point, we gotta get mad, y'all. We can't say that about Buffalo. We can't say that about Atlanta. We can't say that about New York. When can we speak up?
Mr. Hatch. Thank you. Thank you for reminding us of what has happened. This is a new council. This is a new mayor. And we're gonna have the quorum in this, in this chamber, whether you want it or not. Thank you, Mr. Hatch.
You ain't been there but a few months, then you come up and telling folks get smart with them.
I'm not telling you and getting you smart with anything, but you are gonna have the quorum in this chamber, and I appreciate you. I appreciate your words. I appreciate your passion. But there is a way to do business. Thank you. Next speaker.
Anna, I can't pronounce it. Now I don't see the words on the last name. Okay, I'm sorry. Can't handwrite it now.
Good morning. Can you talk into the mic?
35 11th Avenue South in Highland Park. As I know y'all are all probably very aware, there's a lot of abandoned houses in this neighborhood. I have a new baby, and there's some really scary individuals who are squatting in these houses and following me on walks, saying that they're gonna murder me and rape me. I am not the only one this is happening to. It's become a public safety issue, especially for women in this neighborhood. The addresses are 2900, 2914, 2918, 2930, 2984, 2908, Road Circle, so basically all of Road Circle, 2731 Highland Avenue. It's one of the sister homes owned by Robert Keller. He owns all of the ones on Road Circle also. 2906 Highland Avenue, 1016 and 1022 28th Place South, and 1006 32nd Street South. They are all abandoned, owned by two middle-aged men. Robert Keller, who's been in this court numerous times, he pays the fines, and then y'all let them off the hook again. I approached him when he was cutting the grass at one of the houses. He says, I can't sell them while they're under a lawsuit. I think that's an untruth. But y'all need to do something. You need to condemn the houses. Some of the backs of these houses are falling on the neighbor's homes. My neighbor had to move. There was a woman who was raped behind one of them. I have a nine-month-old baby. I don't want to be afraid for my baby to play in the yard with me, but I am. I have a taser and pepper spray that I'm not afraid to use. And these houses are also very historically significant and important to our city. This man has owned them since the 1980s, so I'm unsure why nothing has been done. There was a homeless man staying in, I can't remember the address, the, one of the Road Circle ones. He was squatting. The police couldn't do anything. They come, and unless the owner of the houses says, you have to leave, they can stay. He followed me and said, I'm gonna kill you, and was holding a crowbar. I don't know how this is not an issue. And I want to help Birmingham and revitalize it and be part of the city, but I'm gonna have to move because I'm, you know, I'm not safe. My daughter's not safe. My husband's from New Zealand, and he's like, I can't believe the way this city operates. These houses have sat empty since the 80s, since this man bought them to restore, and he, I guess, has massive mental health issues and has done nothing. He's put expensive roofs on them, but the backs are falling off, and there's homeless, homicidal individuals staying in them. So I'm just asking you to listen and help. The man who comes out, who is the inspector, is actually the one who told me to come here. He's Larry Puckett, really helpful, really sweet. He's tired of serving this man. This man doesn't live in the neighborhood, so he doesn't care. Jeff Worst, who owns the 28th Place South properties, died in December.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing this information to us, bringing it to our attention. We do have a member of the mayor's staff that will take down that information and follow up with these addresses that you provided us. So again, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We want you to feel safe, and so we'll work within the departments.
And I'm a baby now, and that's really what matters.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna ask you, we'll continue to let you share that information with the mayor's staff. Thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Next speaker.
I'm Miss Washington. Virginia, I'm British Washington. I reside at 468 Fourth Street Thomas, Birmingham, Alabama 35214. I like to say, praise the Lord, saints and saints. And I like the address, transportation. I go to church at the Church of the Reconciler, right downtown. We feed the homeless Monday through Thursday and on Sundays. They want to come to church, but they can't. No transportation to come to church, no transportation to go shopping, no transportation to do anything. And I used to live in Atlanta, and they have seven-day transportation. You can't do anything here on a Sunday. So we need transportation on Sunday. This city is too big not to have seven-day service. So I would like that addressed. I would like that taken care of. We don't have a bus to go pick up people. If anybody want to give us a free van, we'll take. If anybody want to give us a free van, we'll take it, but we don't have that. So, that's why we need transportation to get around, to do things that need to... Folks want to go to restaurants. Folks want to go and out to eat. This'll be revenue for our city, but we can't do anything because we shut down. So, could you please take care of that? God bless you all. I'm pastor evangelist, and I thank God for each and every one of you, and I pray you all do an excellent job of what you voted you in for. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Summerford, last.
Hold on one second.
Madam President, we made note of it, and we'll let the director of BJCTA know about the request from the citizen.
You hear that, Miss Washington?
Oh, I did.
We made note of it, and we'll let the director of the BJCTA know. That's, that's more of their purview with the transportation, but we'll let her know.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Well, we, we can talk to it. Thank you. Next. Did they call your name? I'm sorry, sir. Good morning. You're gonna have to talk a little longer.
Excuse me. Good morning, City of Birmingham, um...
Good morning.
...and the City Council. Much respect to you all. I want to start this meeting off a little awkward. I want to start this meeting off with a cry. Cry is the cry of our ancients. Cry is the cry of the mothers whose fathers is being locked up. This cry is the cry that represents... Right here, Denver. Activists that died for, offered for us to be able to stand together. While the City of Birmingham continues to celebrate the progress, diversity, economic success, structural excellence, beautiful, highlighted, blacked, enriched, black achievement. Look at Birmingham. Y'all are beautiful, but the city suffers violence. For more than a hundred years, the world, even right now, Birmingham in the UK experiences the same violence from our youth in our cities that everybody's talking about today. My name's Jamil Summerford. I live in Weston, Alabama, thirteen thirteen Alabama Avenue. I've been there for nine years, and I've seen from the ages of eleven all the way carrying pistols. A gun isn't the problem. Our problem is bigger than guns. The president can talk about gun violence and laws, that's not gonna change nothing. Violence will take place with knives. Violence takes place in the prison system. Violence takes place in domestic systems and in our community. For more than sixty years, the world has felt our resistance, the, of black oppression, slavery, poverty, racial and gender inequality, racially motivated violence. Violence today is our culture, and the youthful, youth have been, for more than sixty years, even in here in Birmingham, have been an urban issue. No justice, no peace is a profound provocative statement. But that, in this justice system, that this diverse, beautiful group of people, sir, we need to look at that statement a little bit more deeper because I would think we have justice, but we certainly have no peace. We could try to avoid and escape it and say, "Well, we got the police to do this and that", but the police are not here to deal with crime. Police respond to the crime when it happens. And with the considerate amount of advancements that we have made in our societies all across America, one would think that we do have answers. One would think with all of the social initiatives and the community engagement programs and the tears and the mothers crying and the fathers dying and the highest population of imprisonment blacks in the world, one would think we've got a lot of answers and solutions, but we all sitting up here confused. And I believe the passion is real. We all want to help, but we all don't know what to do. We trying to figure it out. We trying to take the greatest minds and make it make sense. But I'm gonna tell y'all something before I leave, and, um, I hope you think about this. There's some critical things that we can do here in Birmingham, and I'm willing to help. I'm a conflict resolution specialist. I'm the director of Connecting Police and Citizens Coalition. In my heart, my life, as a relative of Malcolm X, blood relative of Betty Shabazz and all of the children of Malcolm X's, I tend to connect to the activists, to the organizing, to the movements of the people because it ain't, we ain't done because we got black seats, because we understand diversity or diversity education. It's gonna get more addressed when, let me say, if I was the mayor, number one, these are some of the things that I would address.
Sir...
The police...
You're over your time.
Can I get a, can I get one minute?
How many more do you have?
Can I?
What, you have a list of items? How many?
I, I just wanted to make, and if you would bear with me, I just wanted to make that I don't come up here a lot.
I know.
And, and, and articulately, articulating myself, sometimes I think I, I'm a sensitive person. As an empath, I sense everybody's energy. I study people, and I sense energy. So, I've had to learn through a period of time how to be able to express myself, use my intellect, and make it matter in a, in a place where I've felt this oppression, where I've felt like my voice is being muffled. But when it comes to these children and youth, President, I have a personal feeling about this, just like we all. But I'm telling you guys today, we can make a difference. And the first step to making a difference is setting up hubs, just like we did for COVID-nineteen. Seriously, we have a pandemic, and, and, and our children are angry, and they do not trust government just because we, just because we black. They do not, are, there's a generation that's not, government is not trusted. So, here in Birmingham, because we're historically the change makers, we can do it, but we're going to have to actually get involved, really get involved with the community on a next level, President, on a next level pandemic staff. We have to show Georgia, we have to show every state how Birmingham is getting ready to do this, because I see us having a one percent crime rate. I see the city urban, you can't see it, but I can see it. Why? Because God is sending all these people want to be here in this beautiful state. All these people are coming and saying, "We want to help," but then, then we're sending some people away because we're still being systematic, and we're not being humanitarianism as far as us getting out there, really getting with these children, because it's a lot of men, I'm out, there's a lot of men, and there's a lot of people out here that will help and that will say something, but they're scared. Finally, it is not the community's job. The black people in Birmingham, it's seventy-one point three black, does not trust government. We cannot push, nobody, no citizen, listen. I wrote a misconduct on one of my participants in my program. I wrote an incident just to say, "Hey, you can't do this. Let's hold you accountable." That, that participant thought, he told everybody, "I was a snitch. I live in that community." He told them, "I was a snitch." I said, "You have a misconception of what a snitch is." So, when we really, really want to address the violence ain't coming from anywhere, we'll start, we'll stop, won't be, uh, uh, excuse me, police will be, uh, turn signals everywhere. That'll stop, that'll help with the, with the cars. No, no homeless people should be on the, on the, on the sides of the roads asking for money. We need to make, uh, uh, legislation against that, policies against that. No, no people should be on the highways. Um, we, we need to have, um, more intricate, uh, services that address the violence, no, the hurt and the brokenness within each and every ninety-nine community. It should be somebody there coming back here, giving you the business meaning part of it. "Hey, this is what we found out about this, 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 and this." A lot of murders right now, and I know people hear me because I'm going in all ninety-nine neighborhoods, meeting people, talking to them, getting familiarized so I can figure out why, how is it that we got the, such a strong, loving people, but we ain't getting nothing done down in Weston? Or this, this woman coming up here, there's nothing getting done. People are not, it's not nothing really getting done. We're doing it. We got great intentions, but the major bulk of it is still, we did, on my street, Tuscaloosa Avenue, okay, a seventeen-year-old just killed. No, let's not just talk about that. Just, I just get off work, seventeen-year-old is killed. Oh, my God. My son is sixteen. Okay, right around the corner, four hours later, we didn't talk about that today, two more teens were shot. I don't know if they survived, on Twelfth Avenue, Weston. This is serious. So, while we're celebrating all this other stuff and, 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 uh, infrastructure and all these beautiful things, let me explain this to you, and then I'm out.
Sir...
The people will burn the city down.
Let this be a last minute.
Oppression, oppression, people will burn the city down. You can build it up, they will burn it down because they still hurting. Y'all, they still hurting. But I want to tell you something. If you give me a chance to listen to me after this, we can get this together because really, they listen to me, these young people, they listen to me. And we need conflict, effective conflict resolution training from the McDonald's staff to the compick and janitor.
And sir, we thank you for bringing this to us today.
And I appreciate your connection to me. I'm just bringing everybody's passion to this place, and I understand the order that we need.
Yes.
But sometimes we, there's, just like there's a whole bunch of people that don't know English in our city and been here for fifty years and they don't know how to speak English, there's a whole bunch of youth and young men and women, they don't know nothing about decorum. They don't even know what that word mean.
All right. Well, thank you, sir.
They don't know about structure.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Is that the last of our speakers? Mr. Clerk, if I can entertain a motion for adjournment?
I'm gonna second, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. It's Councilman JT Moore, and these are your District Four weekly announcements. So, of course, as you know, we always have neighborhood association meetings taking place. So, this week, we have on the list Kingston as well as South Woodlawn. So, to learn more about those neighborhood association meetings, what time they meet, where they'll meet, what we'll be discussing and talking about, make sure you check out the Birmingham City website and get that information. So, this Wednesday, the UAB Mobile Market will actually be in the Norwood community from twelve to one-thirty. So, if you're looking for an opportunity to get some fresh food, uh, make sure that you check them out, go over there, visit them, and tell them that Councilman Moore told you to come through. All right? So, the Birmingham Public Library will also be having their summer reading kickoff this Saturday at Avondale Park from ten to one PM. So, if you're looking for some family-friendly fun, make sure that you go and check them out. Uh, it's gonna be carnival-themed, and it's an opportunity for you to register for all of their summer reading programs that will be taking place this summer. And while we're on the subject of reading, I gotta give a huge, huge shout-out to the students over at Norwood Elementary School, um, who participated in the Page Pals Initiative and did such an awesome job that they were, all three were place winners. So, first place, we had Xavier Hatcher. Second place, we had Aleah Warren. Third place, we had Anaya Johnson. All of them did an amazing job. All three students were place winners, and so, we say congratulations to them, but then also, Mrs. Space Class came in first place in Page Pals, and they were students at Norwood Elementary as well. So, Norwood definitely is doing an awesome job. They, they figured it out. Um, so, just wanted to celebrate y'all, and if y'all wouldn't mind, everybody join me and give it them a hand clap. Job well done. Job well done. So, that's all I got this week. Uh, those are the announcements. Make sure that you're checking out our Facebook page, our Instagram page as well, just to stay abreast of what's going on in District Four, and we look forward to hearing from